Seven o'clock, to stand for the pledge, please.
The pledge was that we should apply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with which no other.
Okay, get the approval of the amendments of March 21st.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. The motion is accept the financial report and payment of the bills.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. No budget amendment, Steve?
No, nothing.
Okay. All right. Jeannie?
Evening. First item that I have before you is a gentleman from the Archaeological Society of North Chesapeake. He would like to speak to you about an event that will be held at Elk Landing. And the reason that not only do you want to announce what was going to happen down there in the way of a special event, but as the property owner, you may be asked to review permission slip, you know, type of documents and approve any type of excavation in the Brown Historic Trust easement area for archaeological purposes. Mr. Dan Coats, I'd like to introduce Mr. Dan Coats and let him explain to you what his purpose is.
Hello, and let me borrow your folder here, Jeannie, if you're in line, because I think I'm sure that you have a question.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Dan Coats. I'm the president of the Archaeological Society of North Chesapeake. I'm not a fully trained archaeologist, but I'm one of eight certified archaeological technicians in the state of Maryland. And it's a rather rigorous program. I've been the president of the local society that covers the northeast of the state for twelve years. What we've got coming up here at Elk Landing is a very, very exciting thing. The last time an archaeological field session was conducted in this part of the state was thirty-two years ago. And that happened to be at the same time that Ron Thomas was doing the excavation for the detention facility prior to that construction. At the same time, the state of Maryland was doing a field session in Connington. But what we're going to do is, we're following up on Ron Thomas's work. He was an outstanding archaeologist, very revered in Delaware where he was from. But, you know, thirty-two years, a long time ago. We currently have his, the collection from that dig. I shouldn't say his collection, it belongs to the state. And we are re-cataloging, re-bagging, and relabeling over 4,200 artifacts. And so fortunately, we're able to get our hands on virtually every artifact. In fact, I'm personally able to look at every artifact that came out of that site. So it's a real preparation for what we're going to do on the 25th of May to the 4th of June. Now, the idea behind this whole thing was, we couldn't have even sold the idea of a field session up in this neck of the woods, because it was kind of in the hinterland, you know, as far as the state was. I'm a Hartford guy, and that's the way I feel. But the War of 1812 was really what catapulted this to the forefront, because the National Park Service has been working on a star-spangled banner trail. And the very first, you've got quite a bunch of literature in front of you there. One of these brochures is on the left-hand side. The first effort they made at a brochure, Coburn, Admiral Coburn Darrell went up the bay to have a raise and turn around and go back. And we said, nah, that's not what it was. The real action was at Elk, where the British were repulsed, not once or twice during the war. Probably the only place in Maryland to do that, sure. So the next effort at the brochure was a very, very long and detailed map. And sure enough, it includes Elk in at the very end of the line. And some say, you know, that Coburn, pretty vicious guy, he got a little frustrated when he got up in this neck of the woods. But with the War of 1812, we were able to have a field session here that will do two things. Most of the work at Hollinsworth Farm is Elk Landing, but it's a segment of Elk Landing in eighty and eighty-one, was a pre-start site. And I have some artifacts here, I'll just set this up on it. See if you can pass that down the line, take a quick look. That was virtually all pre-start material, from fishing camps that extended from what we call the Middle Archeic Period to the Middle Woodland Period. So somewhere about, oh, maybe five, six thousand years ago to possibly a thousand years ago. But another segment of that Elk Landing was the War of 1812, Fort Hollinsworth. We want to be able to define exactly where Fort Hollinsworth was. To that end, we've done magnetometer surveys this last summer. We had ground penetration radar in there a couple of weeks ago, used some metal detectors at the same time. The problem is that there's an easement on that property, because it's on the Maryland Register of Historic Sites. And being on the Maryland inventory is a little more restrictive than even being on the national inventory. And so that land is supposed to be protected in perpetuity. What we've asked for is a variance, so that we can do very lightly invasive digging, once we've found something, by non-invasive means. All we want to do is truth what we've found electronically, by the old-fashioned way, of putting a little hole in there. And Phil Stevens, local soils engineer, will be putting four-inch auger holes in, looking at the soil, looking for those changes in the soil that would mark where a fort was built. And hopefully, in the process, we come up with one of these. Now, there have been three cannibals of the three-inch variety, that's a three-and-a-half incher, from North Hampton Furnace in Baltimore County, now underwater at Lock River. But there have been some slightly smaller ones in that town at Elk Landing. And we're sure that there's going to be more military hardware that was left at that very short occupation by militia who came and went on almost a daily basis. We know exactly when every man was on site during the British invasion, because of pay records. And that's one fortunate thing about the military, those pay records tell it all. Now, what really saved the day, I'll have to say, getting a little off track, but what saved the day for Elk Landing was that the flotillamen from Delaware, Battle Hardens, they came over and manned Fort Defiance. And 250 men there that stayed for quite a while, they weren't militia. And those guys, you know, when you line up 250 men alongside a creek, people think twice about coming on that creek. So that was a real good aspect of the battle. Now, I want to talk about a couple of things that are in this folder, if you could just briefly follow through with me. And then read through it at your leisure. If you've got high school age kids or college age kids, they may want to look at it also. Left-hand side is some of the membership brochures, talking about various organizations that will be involved in that. Elk Landing Foundation, Archaeological Society of Maryland, our chapter of the Archaeological Society of Maryland, we call it the North Chesapeake Chapter. And also our newsletter, single-page newsletters on that left-hand side. On the right-hand side is just a one-page brochure or one-page handout, but as part of the Archaeology Month booklet that I'm in, some of you have already had a chance to look at. This is the extract that applies to Elk. And it talks about that magnetometer survey that we did back in July. And also, on the back page, it discusses the artillery and a little bit about the war. Oddly enough, in the War of 1812, you hear the scholars talk about it, per capita, there were more Americans killed in that war than any other war. Because, you know, there are so few people at the time in the country that's just really evolving. Most of those deaths occurred up on the Canadian border, where the real fighting was. But still, Chesapeake Bay took a real hit. Now, this larger handout is an extract of Ron Thomas's work at the Hollinsworth Farm. And it will tell you a whole story of his work in nineteen eighty-one. And it does have pictures of artifacts, and some of those very artifacts are in that record box that I have. Just a couple of other tools that were found at that site. One grinding stone, what we call a muller stone, or, you know, mono matate, is what is called down southwest, kind of a mortar pestle combination. And this is the hand part of that combo. What we call hammer stones are normally a pitted stone that are used to fracture other stones, probably grind up dried fish into a fish powder that could be stored for a long time and be very light, keep carried with them for the whole season. And then there's always what we call firecrack rock. And this will come out of that site by the bushel. And it has to do with these cooking fires, and maybe smoking fires for the fishing industry there. The Adramas fish run, you know, when those fish run, they're shoulder to shoulder at the headwaters, and they're very easy to harvest. In fact, if you talk to old farmers, I guarantee you, they say, hey, as soon as those fish ran, all the kids head down to the big and little elk and snatch up as many of those fish as they can, take them home, smoke them, and that's what you eat until the crops come in. So you stop eating the hog from the winter time, and you start eating the fish, and you're always sprouting.
Herring and shacks.
Yes, indeed. And herring couldn't force people to eat it anymore with Saboni, but in the old days, yeah, that was fine.
Excuse me, what is the estimated age of what you just held in your hand? How old do you think that is?
This firecrack rock, this would be throughout the occupation period. So it's a little hard to date that. Now, if it has charcoal with it, we can carbon date that and find out almost exactly what it is, or how long it is. But the points that I showed here, they are very diagnostic. And the typology that they use change from generation to generation. So we can look at them, we can date them, but within a couple hundred years anyway. So that's basically the plan for Elk Landing this summer. We expect to get about fifty people a day. There's a state furlough day, the Friday before Memorial Day weekend. It's going to be an awful lot of state-deployed archaeologists up here planning, because their day off. It's open to the public.
That's my question.
There's a small fee, there's registration form on the right-hand side. Anybody that belongs to Elk Landing gets in free. People can walk out the street, and we treat it like a school. We'll line them up alongside somebody that can mentor them throughout the process. So there's a lot of opportunity here for outreach, especially for Elk Landing. And we basically got two goals in this, or I do, I speak for myself now. We are going to come up with some outreach information that will be of tremendous importance to the Elk Landing Foundation, mainly the history of that fort and where it is. So they'll be able to, you know, get Chesapeake gateways to give them a grant for a sign that'll say, you're standing on one end of a defensive redoubt from the War of 1812. And the other thing is, we're going to leave with money in their pocket. This is no cost to the town, no cost to the foundation, and the foundation's going to make a little money. So, do you have any questions?
I'm trying, what are the hours the public are invited to be here? I'm trying to see if it's.
Well, we register beginning at eight o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
And there's a safety briefing every day at eight-thirty. And anybody who digs that morning must attend that briefing. Then in the afternoon, we repeat that briefing for people who come in at lunchtime, who may have a long commuting business. But a lot of the people who come up here for the full ten days, they're going to camp out down on Old Field Point, where an archaeologist lives down there, has a family lodge, Henry Ward. He also did some archaeology work there at the old stone house. And he's allowing us to use his property for a primitive campground. But you'll see on the registration that the registration fee maxes out at three days. So fifteen dollars a day, after three days, you're paid up. You can come the whole ten days for three days worth of by a month. So it's a rather cheap school for what people will be getting out of it.
And will press release be done on this?
Let me see.
We're working with, you may have seen a Cecil Wig article about a Spirit Point last week.
Yeah.
They had contacted a couple of us that happened to be up here at Elk Landing about that, when they wrote the article. And that reporter was very interested in following up on what we're doing. Eric Meese is the foundation web person and blog individual. And he is already, he has information about it already on the website.
Well, how about, maybe we could put it on our website as well, for the town site? Put that on there, that'd help us too, get some publicity out. Because I know Eric will put it on the Elk Landing site.
That Elk Landing website is one of the best I've seen. Again, you can't believe what makes me doubt anything. They always bug me from the website.
The thought you do, is your focus, the older Americans or do you also involve students at an educational level that their curriculum allow that to happen?
We're going to focus on two groups of students. One is Boy Scout merit badge.
I'm going with Boy Scout, yeah.
And I'll be talking to the district, at the district meeting next week. And so we hope to get some Boy Scouts out there. Very tough merit badge, but they have put in eight hours in the field at one of these field sessions. The other thing is that Towson University will have a class out here for the archaeology class. And so they'll be either commuting or staying in the area. And one of the principal investigators is their professor at Towson.
Now, you also mentioned Hollinsworth Farms. Where did that name come from? Is that in conjunction with something else with Hollinsworth out here?
Well, Hollinsworth Farm is, that's a Hollinsworth town.
Okay.
And originally, the site was called Hollinsworth Farms. The site was a twenty-ninth site that was registered in the county, and that was one that Ron Thomas worked in 1980.
What was the original size of that farm? It was several hundred acres, wasn't it?
I think so, I'm sure it was.
Was for Hollinsworth Manor, it's now a part of it.
Oh, so my next question, you were, could acreage then if it was a hundred? So the Hollinsworth Manor is a part of that Hollinsworth Farm?
Well, you've got Hollinsworth Manor, the water treatment plant, the correctional facility, a lot of things they weighed at that farm.
All of that's part of it. Have you had any contact with the Cecil County School system as far as what you're doing?
Unfortunately, it's a rough time of year for schools that don't have an archaeology program, because this is right at the end of the school year for high school, and the college kids are just done, they're gone. You don't see them anymore. But we do have a member of our society who's a trained archaeologist, is a teacher at Cecil County Community College. And so, you know, she'll be dealing with that. I don't think we really approach highly of her. We will have a display in Elk Landing Library starting tomorrow.
This might be the question, but I thought the homes at Hollinsworth Manor, when were they built?
Built during the war.
During the war?
During the 1940s.
Downhill housing for World War II.
So somewhere along that line, the farms evidently must sold some acreage to somebody. Am I correct in my thought? And also those homes that were built there?
Yeah.
The town got it, the federal government, it got the commonplaces like community center and the roads and all the infrastructure, was built for labor during World War II. It was a farm there at one time.
Got you.
That entire finessal was laid out at one point, and building lots of those, that never happened. So as happens, you know, throughout this part of the country, it's people dream of building towns and never quite materializes.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Thank you, we're looking forward to it, and helping get some people down there, and that'd be really interesting to see. Once you find some of these artifacts, if you find it, are we going to be able to see them or know what you found or?
The arrangement is for the labs, the state labs, to take them for a year for study and conservation, and then loan them back to the foundation on the two-year revolving up, as long as they want, at no charge.
And how this works out better for the Landing, for the foundation, is that the foundation doesn't have to worry about securing it, ensuring it, and that sort of thing, it's done for them. So it's in a secure place, and they can get to it pretty much at any time if they request it, but they don't have to worry about losing it, you know, getting stolen, that sort of thing.
Oh, okay, good. All righty. Anything else?
Can I make a statement? At Hollinsworth Family, do you know where they're buried?
No, I don't.
A little cemetery up off a long lane. They have to go between two houses, they go back right away there, it's a granite walled cemetery that the Gilpins and the Hollinsworth were buried. It goes back, the first grave back there was July 28, 1776. That's the first grave in that cemetery.
What was the year?
Seventeen seventy-six.
July 26, 1776. You probably know where it is, Charlie. Back of Febrezees and Evans, it's right between the two houses on the back of the creek.
How many graves are there?
We cleaned it last year, probably thirty.
Really?
Very good.
Thank you.
We've got history all over the town. That's good. History here. Okay. I guess you're right in the spot there, then you can continue.
Segue from the next topic, adoption of sustainable community plan. I sent you an electronic version, and also, there's paper copies at your desk, and I have some up here, anyone that likes copies of the Sustainable Community Plan. You know, as you may remember, the state has decided to focus and target its grant resources, and they're changing things up a little bit. You used to have a community legacy area and designated neighborhood area, and in addition to the other areas, the enterprise zones and hub zones and.
Priority funding.
Priority funding area, the town as a whole is a priority funding area. Well, the state is looking to target their grant funds, and they're phasing out the community legacy areas and designated neighborhood areas, and they want to phase in something called the Sustainable Communities area. And what they're asking communities to do, if you're interested in receiving this designation, which has some benefits in the way of community legacy grant opportunities, tax credits, sidewalk retrofit benefit, they want you to go back and take a look at your community legacy plans, any other plans that you may have done in recent years, like your comprehensive plan, we have the Transit Oriented Development Plan, and Downtown Master Plan. And so they want you to take a look at all those plans, and they want to make sure that you're targeting projects in an area that would need to reverse any kind of declining investment or help increase the economic development of an existing town center. And so what they're asking, what they had asked us to do, asked any town that wanted to apply to do, is to create a local work group of citizens, business owners, other stakeholders, which the town did. We had some volunteers from the Elk Landing Alliance volunteer to serve on the work group. They reviewed the projects that were listed in these plans. And what the state is asking us to do is to describe what we've accomplished so far, and then list the things that we have yet to accomplish that are a priority for the next five years, which the work group had done. We'd met three times in the past eight weeks. The deadlines were coming up pretty quick, so we feel that we've got most of the projects in this plan that we should be targeting our focus on to continue the progress and the success that Elk Landing has had. If you read the plan, I enjoyed writing it, except the length, it was pretty lengthy. But I enjoyed doing the research and listing all the accomplishments the town has to date, has done to date. And it's, you know, I was very proud of the success the town has had with a lot of the state programs and grants. So anyway, what we did was, I have bulleted items that sort of highlight the top projects that we would be focusing on in the next five years, that the work group is recommending that we focus on in the next five years. And I'll read them aloud for the benefit of anyone in the audience. The first one is extending Mark commuter rail service to Elk Landing and construction of a multimodal transit center. This particular item is something that is active currently. The mayor has met with representatives from state authority and the transit administration at the state, and they are now beginning to consider, actually, they're going to do that this year, is their legal process, that National Environmental Policy Act, investigation of the train, opening a train station right out there. That's the target area. Now, probably what's driving this is other activities in the area, such as the acquisition of the Chrysler Plant by the University of Delaware, and the plans from the University of Delaware to create a major research area and transit center there themselves, housing for students and that sort of thing, medical research. The state has had informed us that they're going to look at several different locations for the train center, one is Elk Landing, one is Long Island, and they'll look at the ridership route to those areas and determine the best location for these, for a train station. So they're going to begin that process, and we wanted to make sure that that was included on the plan, which is a normal project. And this is a project that has been identified in all of these documents, in the comprehensive plan, the downtown master plan, the transit oriented development plan, and the Cecil County Brac Action Plan. And then the other items on here are construction of the Phase Two streetscape on North Street and Railroad Avenue to establish a main train, main walkway, pedestrian walkway, pedestrian accommodations in that area. And that was the next logical area for a streetscape way back when we did the first streetscape on Main Street. The next item is intersection upgrades and improvements at US 40 and Earl 213. That intersection's been a failing intersection for a long time, and in order to accommodate any additional growth in the area, the problems of that intersection has to be resolved. They have to upgrade that intersection, or it could curtail growth in the town. or it could curtail growth in the town without it, because that could be considered something that would be a detriment to any kind of development south of Route 40. Other items were, things were mentioned in a number of documents.
Before you go any further, I agree with you, that area is congested, but has anybody ever thought of a conceivable way that that area could be opened up, given the limited space?
There was a couple of different plans that were developed way back when Senator Baker was in office. He had sort of pushed the state into coming up with a plan and there were simple upgrades where they widened the different road lengths there up until roundabouts, not roundabouts, but cloverages. And of course, that was the most expensive option. And the real estate there on the corners of 213 and 40 are valuable real estate, commercially speaking. So it wouldn't have been a cheap fix, but it's still, the intersection's still failing and nothing has been done.
Correct.
So it's, and as a matter of fact, this intersection will be included in a letter to the state for their tour, their transportation plan. Development of a complete bicycle and pedestrian network throughout the Sustainable Community area. In addition, a multi-springway trail that will link to other ringways existing and planned in the area. Installation of wayfinding signage. We currently have a plan, conceptual plan for new signage in the area, wayfinding signage with different types and sizes of signs and I believe this year we'll be able to submit to the state for approval for the location of at least the first phase of those wayfinding signs. I noticed that we have a new sign for the parking lot, the employee parking lot across the street, and it's beautiful. I believe one of our employees made that sign.
It's our most current wayfinding sign.
It's our most current, it's beautiful, he did a great job. I noticed that today. A watershed assessment to determine the location and best management practices and stormwater retrofits to meet total maximum daily load. If you're familiar with the watershed implementation plan and the requirement to meet nutrient reduction in the bay, Elton is, will be required to do that too. We have an MS4 permit that deals with our handling of stormwater and we will be required to retrofit or, well, more than likely just retrofit areas in town that do not have stormwater management infrastructure associated with development, anything pre-1980 essentially. So we're going to have to figure out how we're going to reduce some of the load from those properties that do not have stormwater facilities. So we would have to have a stormwater watershed assessment and then a plan based on that assessment, something that we can do in permitting to reduce our maximum daily load to the bay. Extension of sewer connections to existing septic systems with a priority to those in environmentally sensitive areas. Believe it or not, we have about, maybe about twenty properties that are still on septic systems and several of them are very close to the bigger Little Creek's in critical area. So there would be priority to hook to our public sewer system. The biggest problem here with that is cost. So we'd be looking for any kind of funding assistance to help us extend sewer to those areas to help reduce the load from the septic systems entering the bay. Development of additional wells and water supplies and purchase agreements with private water company. We're always looking for additional sources of water to make sure we can accommodate growth, whether it's new wells or agreements with private companies to provide water. Improving sanitary sewer utility infrastructure by correcting INI, inflammation, filtration, drainage and repair of conveyance lines. We have an issue with INI in the town where we're actually treating stormwater in the sewer plant and that's eating up some capacity. And as the state tightens up on the total maximum daily load in the bay, you want to make sure that you have reduced any kind of impact on your sewer plant so that you can accommodate growth and you're not treating stormwater. Rehabilitation of Bell Hill Water Tower. We've rehabilitated two water towers so far using CDDG funds and the Bell Hill Water Tower is the next tower that we'd be looking at possibly for rehabilitation money. Construction of a recreation center. This has been a topic in the comprehensive plan and, you know, all these plans also. It was important in the original community legacy application back in 2002. Recreation Center was on that plan. Originally, it was on the south side of 40, but on the eastern end. Acquisition of additional parkland out of the flood plain. We've always, we've always been looking for land that where we wouldn't have to worry about the kids being precluded from playing in the fields because of flood events or, you know, scraping mud off the grass from being inundated through flooding. There were some things that I had forgotten to add to the bullet points grant initiatives, I do want to include that, an energy audit. That was discussed at one of our meetings and it didn't make it to bullet point, but I will add it in on this. And streetlights, there was a, this had spoken about using more efficient streetlights to reduce energy costs. And then other things, design guidelines that are discussed in the plan but not listed as a bullet item, but design guidelines for the historic district, which we're going to be working on this year anyway.
Very good, Jeanne, I tell you, you've really put some effort in this and it's a great job you've done and I really commend you for doing it. It's a big thing to be, the state's requiring us and asking us to do something like this and it shows you what we have to commit to do to get something done and you did an excellent job, I gotta tell you. Four thousand words, I mean, a lot of questions, a lot of answers.
Well, each question was limited to four thousand characters and I went over that on four different questions, I had to cut back. I was just so proud of everything we've accomplished. I have mass here of the Sustainable Community Area, if anyone wants to see it. It looks very similar to the community legacy area. We did increase areas around on the Route 40 corridor. There were areas that were outside before, I expanded it to include them and the schools and more of the parkland. There's no limit. I did ask the question if I could include the whole town as a community, as a sustainable community examining, I was told I couldn't do that. So we did make it a little larger than the old community legacy area. Wanted to make sure that we included all of our commercial areas and industrial zones, enterprise and industrial plan.
And by doing this, it's going to help us now that they changed everything with the grant situation now. This will take the place of it and we'll be able to get our grants a lot easier, hoping we can get on our grants.
Right, and what it does is it opens us up for, it allows to apply for community legacy grants for business retention and attraction and encouraging homeownership and commercial revitalization. Neighborhood Business Works Program that provide loans for gap financing for newer expanding small businesses. There's a tax credit program, a job creation tax credit. Sidewalk retrofit program for sidewalks outside of Sustainable Communities. The sidewalk retrofit program will pay fifty percent of the sidewalks. For the sidewalks in the community legacy, I'm sorry, Sustainable Communities area, they will pay one hundred percent of the cost of the sidewalks. We are currently working on a sidewalk plan with the state, so we'll be requesting a sidewalk fund soon. And this is about it. Are there any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, when I first came on the board, basically, we took a tour of Melville Park. Remember the wetlands and the beavers and all that that we thought was going to extend up? Now when you ride by, you look over, it's dry out there, what happened?
We, I'll be honest with you, we don't know. I noticed it, I want to say last year, and I talked to Craig about it and I pulled up some aerial photographs and it was wet, there was a giant pond, there were birds and all kinds of animals there. And we actually took a day, I think Lewis and Public Works and Craig and I and Parson Recreation all went out there and we were scratching our heads, the water was gone. Now it's starting to come back in the one corner, the one far corner, I noticed that yesterday. But it was, we were perplexed as to what happened to it.
Even though the rain we get too, it's not filling up. We were out there yesterday looking at it and it's just a little puddle, but it seems to be coming back, but I don't know.
We walked to see if there was any kind of excavation or beaver activity and we couldn't, we were perplexed.
Yeah, but that came right up to the, almost to the water.
Yeah, I know it's not there.
No, it's dried up. And we didn't have, we hadn't had that big of a drought, I know that.
No.
No way.
Just let me know if there's anything else that you think that you've admitted to the plan that you'd like in it. I plan to start putting it into the electronic format for the state on tomorrow and Monday, I'm going to finish up with some photographs and get ready. It has to be submitted electronically by Tuesday of next week and the paper version with the discs Wednesday of next week. So there's still time if you want to add something to it or have any questions.
All right, then, if there's any more questions, can I get a motion to accept the resolution R three dash 2012? Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Jeanne.
Fair Housing Month.
To the record, I'll read the resolution R three, 2012. I'm sorry. To the record, I'll read the proclamation of the Maryland Commissioner's Department of Housing.
Speak up, please.
I'm sorry.
Could you speak up? Thank you.
Read the proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Town of Elton is proud to join the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in celebrating the forty-fourth anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, also referred to as the Fair Housing Act. Whereas the 1968 Civil Rights Act guaranteed the right of all Americans to fair and equitable housing and prohibited discrimination concerning the sale, rental, financing of housing based on race, religion, and national origin, and was later amended to additionally prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender and protect the disabled families with children. And whereas in order for the Fair Housing Act to be effective and prohibit discrimination, it requires the vigilance and continuing cooperation of all levels of government, real estate, home building industry, banks, and lending institutions, landlords, and citizens. And whereas throughout Maryland, spirit cooperation is being provided through the efforts of the state, federal, and local governments and with the support of any community nonprofit organization. And whereas promoting the equal, housing opportunities is essential to the goal of promoting nondiscrimination in all areas of life and for all citizens. Now therefore, we, the Maryland Commissioners of Town of Elton, hereby proclaim April 2012 as Fair Housing Month. And witness, we have here to set our hands and seal the Town of Elton's Fourth Day of April 2012.
Do I have a motion to accept the proclamation? Does it move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, Dwight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we have presented the petition for annexation of parcels, three, map for the three parcels, 1131 and 1132, consisting of a little over eight acres. You may recall, this is the Stafford Association Project for Workforce Housing out of Bell Hill Road. They're very much focused on trying to make this project go, make it go sooner rather than later. And this obviously is the first step in the annexation process and the first step in the long process of getting the development approved. They're hoping to get the annexation approved as quickly as they can and start through the process of presenting plans for the annexation development. As you know, they actually have some pretty good ideas what they want to do out there already, because they really can't present any of the plans to the town until the other part of the conference. If I have any questions?
Any questions? Okay. I get a motion for accept the annexation petition. Does that move? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Louis.
The board is, I'm sure the board is aware that the town has a major project at the Elton Water Treatment Plant and in order to facilitate the energy recommendations that are engineered and developed, we're putting in new pumps, new motors, and controls, very frequently drive mechanisms to operate those pumps. The town ordered the VFDs directly and we've already been in the process of manufacturing them and those, providing those to the town. We hope we can get those by the end of May. In order to install the VFDs, we had issued a contract or a bid along with another bid for the pump motor and ventilation system because the VFDs are very hot mechanisms for pieces of equipment and require special ventilation systems. The bids were submitted, I mean, released and we received bids for the VFDs and controls for project 2012, number two, from Quantum Control and NuAR. Their bid price is $24,900. The second bid was from Native Sons Limited, Windsor Mill, Maryland, for $112,463. Tentatively, I would suggest that the Quantum Control be tentatively granted the award for this work, which is most consistent with the estimate of the engineer. I don't know where Native Sons got the $100,000, unless I misread the specs. The second project is for a pump motor electrical ventilation system. Received two bids, AC and Schultes of Maryland and Millersville, Maryland, and for $93,900. And from Native Sons Limited, Windsor Mill, Maryland, for $130,920. I would recommend tentatively that AC Schultes of Maryland of Millerville, Maryland, be awarded a bid. We'll have the engineer review those bids and if they recommend it, Quantum Control and AC Schultes will bid and responsible, then I'll issue a contract for those, assuming they're for the trees.
Okay, shall we wait till we get back to hear back from them?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Old business. I'm going to get Mary Jo, do you have any old business?
No, I do not.
I have none. Pardon?
I have none.
Okay. Charlie?
Mentor.
Chuck, any?
We have old business, the three-fold pamphlet for code enforcement throughout the town. Have we discussed or taken any action on that?
I'm sorry?
Three-fold pamphlet for code enforcement. Have we taken any action towards dispersing that or getting that out to the community?
I'll have to check.
Just the one you thought you might?
Yes.
That's it.
New business. I'll have Mary Jo discuss some of this, but last Friday, I had the pleasure of being downtown to welcome some distinct visitors to our town from Wyoming, Idaho, and Colorado. About seventy of them came to our town and was given the tour of the town and they were very excited going through the town and I thought it was very exciting that we were able to do that. If you would like to elaborate a little bit, if you want to.
It was wonderful, they came for the National Main Street Convention and the state of Maryland. They were looking for facade improvement grants and arts and entertainment co-ops and venues that have opened and they suggested they come to Elton and they were here from 9:30 till about 2:00. Loved the town, I've had the pleasure of spending some time with them this week at the national convention and really enjoyed themselves and I have to say, everyone was very hospitable to them. And I want to thank all the volunteers that helped with the, as tour guides with the seventy-two people that came. Jeanne was one, Mayor stopped in, and some other volunteers, so it was a great day.
Yeah, because we were able to exchange ideas from what these towns go through and how they operate their towns and what they have versus what we have.
We had a few mayors here.
So it was very, very good. Yeah, we had two mayors, very nice, very, very well-planned event and I think if we get more of these things like that, that'd be really great. The other thing is, Town of Elton's Department of Public Works will be having a Pollution Prevention Day event Saturday, April 21st, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 o'clock, 209 Blue Bowl Avenue. So if anybody can go down, go down there, it should be something interesting. It's an effort to support the Cecil County Household Hazardous Waste Day event and join on the Earth Day participation, so that's, we're going to do that. So that's, we're going to do that, so if you can make it, stop down. Mary Jo, you wanted some banners for the two hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. You can go ahead and get those. I'm just going to set that up. Okay. And last thing, Fourth of July, and working with these people and trying to get us a band. One band that was going to profit for us had a previous commitment, but they got us another band called Almost Dangerous, the best of rock, blues, and country music. They talked to me today, I'm going to be getting with them again, showing them the area and setup, and if they're willing to do it, help us out. So that's a big savings right there. That's all I have. Mary Jo?
You did mention the two hundred and twenty-fifth. The town was established May twenty-fourth, eighteen ninety, or seventeen eighty-seven, I'm sorry. So we are celebrating the two hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary this year, and it begins May twenty-fourth, and we have a five-day celebration, and you're starting your dig on May twenty-fifth, so I was, I have a lot of questions, but my assistant's also on the board at Elk Landing, so we'll try and put something together. But there is going to be a lot going on in the town, ending with the parade on Memorial Day. So the Historical Society we've been working with, they're going to have all kinds of skits and some things for you to go there. They're going to have a memory wall, so when this goes up, we would love everybody to go put something on the memory wall, something you remember about the past here in Elton. So it's going to be a great few days here, and we'll be ordering our two hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary banners shortly and start celebrating. That's all I have.
We don't have anything new, but just want to commend Mary Jo and her award that she received last Thursday, and even sitting there myself, I was shocked to hear a lot of stuff that she did do and she's still doing. So I just want to commend her on her achievement.
Thank you.
Charlie?
Louis, how's the grants coming going? I know right now we're in the season of it, I guess the man started and everything has been.
Yeah, they're moving.
Doing. Okay, also, I wanted to check aside where transmission was rebuilt. Depending upon what vehicle, does that come out of their specific budget, you know, with the transmission, a Dell, with Dell Ray?
If it comes to that.
Public Works or the Police Department, depending on, I don't know where that's specific.
Right, just want to make sure that it does come out of their budget.
Yeah, yeah.
Mary Jo, for the two hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, I think the Elton High School will have the Elk ready, but the Elk will not have the names as it once had on it, which was an attraction for a lot of people when they came downtown, so the Elk will be available for your use.
Oh, great.
So I don't know what you may be able to do with that.
Okay.
Also, Louis, I saw another check there, unfortunate check there, there's the X, X mulch, dyed mulch, black mulch. What's the difference between the three? I'm sure it is. I don't know. Because you're paying a different amount of money for each, and that's the reason why I ask.
The darker mulch, I think, was used in the landscaping.
Is treated for the bugs, I think, also.
Yeah, it's a much more.
I think it's treated for pests.
Pest resistance.
Some, I'm not sure.
I just saw a difference in prices, but I just thought mulch and mulch the reason why I asked was never a dumb question, I don't think. Also, I'd like to thank Mary Jo for what she was honored for last week, particularly the fact that she dealt with children most of her life, which has been my expertise, I think. But anyhow, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Louis, another thing, I know the Police Department probably goes to a lot of workshops because of change in laws and technologists and the other. Does public work do anything like first aid updates, seminar, or equipments, or anything like that collectively as a group?
Not the entire group, because they shut down. So what they do, they send people to flyers training, for example, or safety training, or some, Sidney Dufatini goes to, he went today, all day for a stormwater, I think.
Stormwater.
Stormwater training. Yeah, they go to training, too.
But I'm saying, do it collectively, because I know certainly you can't take a whole group and do it. You're shut down, but there are times when if you have a workshop, you take a segment of men, so they get to train it, and another time a segment of men, so that everybody's getting the same thing. Because I don't know whether your men cross-train in their jobs out there or not, but certainly if you're doing the same job, I think you want to have that same information.
Yes.
All right, I'm done. Thanks.
Yes. Concerning the pickups, the vacuum brush pickups, I've had some concerns from residents that they're not completely being taken away. In other words, the brush is being picked up, but some is being left. And it's a substantial enough pile that's left that it's definitely noticeable and something has to be done with it, so it's still left in the streets. If we could pay a little bit more attention to that, I appreciate it. And I understand the fact that we don't, you know, pick up certain things, the rocks and the dirt.
Yeah, they will pick up that.
And I understand that, and I did go out and actually see some to verify, and wasn't a whole lot of rocks and dirt involved, so we just pay attention to that. And also, I had some concerns from the community out near Walnut Lane. Making a left turn off of two seventy-nine onto Walnut Lane. If there's any way we could approach the state highway to look at possibly putting a left-hand signal there, a left-turn signal, just getting a lot of concern and complaints about it, to the point where they're looking at putting a petition together, and maybe we can direct them to the right place to send that.
The state doesn't respond to petitions.
Okay.
But they'll respond to a request from the town to conduct a study of that intersection.
Okay.
And that's how we would do it.
Okay.
Petitions don't mean anything to them. They're going to come from a loophole.
Okay.
So we can do that. You're talking about, you're talking about eastbound traffic, left turn?
That's correct.
That's saying that white enough, it looks like they may be able to do that on the shoulder and put the baseline on the white.
I know it's a very tight intersection.
It is.
But it's, I mean, it's, I'm just curious myself as to how many accidents, you know, but I'm just getting a lot of concerns about that intersection.
Good.
Thank you, that's it. I appreciate you looking at it.
Mr. Litzenberg?
There's usually one accident a week at that intersection.
That's about what I hear.
Well, that's true. I'll let's move on to five more, I might help. A couple of questions here about our water situation. Several months ago, if I'm not mistaken, there was a twelve thousand dollar balance in the water and sewer funds. Is that correct? Not stated?
I'm getting at the paper.
Right now, it's red.
Well, that was my question. It's in the red.
That's correct.
Where is the, what fund are you taking it out of to tie martins in the water?
The water funds.
Well, you just said it's in the red.
Right, it's in the red right now. April first is the first bill to reflect the approved rate increase that is meant to cover this in the red situation where we're in now.
Okay. The last time we had an increase in our water, if I'm not mistaken, was the fourth quarter of two thousand and ten. Is that correct? When we had the increase?
I think it was the December first, twenty twenty.
Okay, so now we're in the red. We can't martins in roughly forty-six thousand dollars, that's what's in the expenditures here. Is that per month, you're paying them roughly?
That's correct.
That comes out to about five hundred and sixty thousand a year, roughly. Then you got seven trend, we're paying them roughly, is that about the same figure with them?
That's just value multi-mapped, yes.
Okay, gentlemen, in other words, our water sewer fund this coming year is going to cost about a million six hundred thousand roughly, or eight hundred thousand rough, just this rough figure.
The seven trends actually says between water and sewer, but twenty-five percent is towards the water fund, seventy-five is towards the sewer fund, because they operate both the water and wastewater treatment.
Well, budgeted last year was eight forty-two, six thirty, I think is what in the budget would be revenue was. So this year, we're really going to be in the red with the water and sewer.
Oh, with the water, yes.
Water.
Definitely the water, yes.
Well, how much are you going to have to increase? Have you figured that out yet, what the new bills are going to be?
There will be a fifty-seven percent increase.
Fifty-seven percent.
The water portion of the bill.
The water.
Effectively, it's about a thirty-four percent increase when you add both the water and sewer, because the water portion is much smaller than the sewer portion of the bill.
How much was it again?
The water itself is about fifty-seven percent increase. The sewer is, I think, about ten percent. So effectively, because the weed at average, so water is much smaller portion of the bill than sewer is, combined is like twenty-four percent.
Next bill is going to be, will be filled in, what, in June?
Actually, April, the bill's going out, so I don't know where, when you get your bill, but the bill is effective April first, that would nail.
So the increase will be within this bill?
Absolutely. April first, first bill reflecting.
It has been discussed with Ken Banner, the seven trend about water. Has anything been done about that? Have they been?
As far as like the wells?
Going any further with that?
Yes, we have. We looked at them, and we've already, he gave us a proposal, which I discussed with Louis, that maybe we could get in the budget.
But there is something in the works on that.
Oh, yes.
We sent out cost-outlay and itemized structure in order to get this task completed. That's just sent a couple of days ago.
Yeah, I mean, we're aggressively looking for other sources and release.
That's good. Another thing about, under your old businesses, it doesn't seem like, when something comes up, it doesn't seem like the old business ever comes back into effect. What's going on with the homeless in the parks?
Well, we've got.
Systematically being listed and.
Yep.
And, um, up homeless, but the belonging that they're not claiming.
Well, what about?
We've already, they've already picked up quite a bit.
Okay, what about your signs that say close from dusk to daylight? Doesn't that mean everybody?
Yes, it does. That's law enforcement.
Okay. So what about? Your blighted situations, have you had any response from some of the letters that you've sent out, some of these properties that were having the letters been sent out?
There are lots in there, I've got to about to reply.
Have you had any response?
Have they responded, you know?
I need to check with Brad.
I don't understand why people, why you guys don't ask these questions at a town meeting. It's under old business.
Well.
Because it's been brought up many, many, many times, and it seems like we have to keep asking the questions to get any answers. I talked to the mayor in Northeast, if you need a way of getting rid of the blighted problem in houses and so forth, call them down there, they can tell you exactly how to do it, because they do it down there. Very simple, it's through the court systems, and they take care of it that way.
If I'm not mistaken, then we collectively talk about the blight situation at the mayor's meeting that we had.
Yeah, we did, we did. And we have several different ones to look at.
Yeah, we definitely have.
That they're going over right now.
That's actually different from what we've done before. We discussed, you know, different things from eminent domain and everything.
The fee process.
Yeah, we're looking at a possible registration and fee process.
Registration and fee for what? Rental properties?
No, no, blighted areas.
That's what different areas are doing, a way to deal with that type of issue. In other words, instead of the property sitting vacant and basically deteriorating and being blight, then it promotes activity, and it also allows them to register, let the town know what's going on, and constantly, it's their responsibility to let us know. And if that's not taking place, then there is a type of revenue that the town gets from, in the form of fees where their properties.
Well, a house can be vacant, and not be blighted, it can be vacant. You've got a lot of houses right now through the real estate market that are vacant, or banks are not blighted.
And I understand.
But the places we're talking about are the ones that have been or discussed over and over and over again.
And we understand.
And we still see them in the same deportable condition.
We understand that, but being vacant is the first part of that process. And we have to understand that to deal with blighted properties, it's going to be a process. It's nothing that we'll be able to do to put an ordinance in effect that will eliminate blight like that.
I understand.
Right, it's going to be a process, and, you know, we don't want it to be an expensive process that becomes a burden of the town and taxpayers. So we're looking at different avenues.
The way it's done in Northeast is explained to me by their mayor. If they've got a problem with a property that needs repair, they'll send them a letter. The second letter, the third time, if the town has to repair it, they will repair it and send them the bill. If they don't get a response from the bill, then they go to the court system, put a lien on the property, and sooner or later, somebody's going to pay the bill and maintain that property.
And that's very.
And this is what they don't have a problem with down there, because they enforce their ordinance.
That's very true. What you don't hear a lot is that process is very lengthy.
We know it is.
And that property can still remain vacant and still remain blighted for many, many years to come before you can get that money, recoup that money back to the town.
Well, some of these properties that we can refer to, and the people that were in here from that.
Yes.
Real estate group of people that are all land, all property owners that maintain their properties, that's been six months ago. If you started the process then, something might be happening now.
Well, that's what we're discussing. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Dave Fletto?
Fletto, how are you?
Fletto.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Well, it's very interesting to actually follow. I guess, Mr. Litzenberg. First, I would just introduce myself. I started out my career as a teacher in the school system under now Senator Dave Rudolph, and I took a position in Philadelphia as an administrative assistant, and I've been a Realtor for many years, and am now currently getting my license for mortgage lending. So it was interesting earlier to hear about how everybody supports, as well as I do, our Fair Housing Month. That being said, I'm not here for that, but it does coincide. I'm here because of a water bill, and I have this property in Elton that I would love to sell, and the blighted properties make it really not a great idea to list it yet, so I'm sort of waiting for the market to recuperate before I sell my home. And I'm here to complain about an increase in my water bill of fifty percent and from what I calculated, a ten percent sewer bill. That being said, as we're talking about fair housing, I found it very interesting, because as we put people and first-time home buyers into houses, and I live in Thompson Estates, and that would probably be a first-time home buyer who would be purchasing in that area. You don't look at a debt ratio when you're qualifying somebody for a mortgage. So it's almost like what we're trying to fix or amend is not going to happen. So here, I list my own house, and I find a buyer, and it's a young family, and I now get them the loan that they need. Their utility bill does not count as they're trying to pay their mortgage payment. I don't have to look at that. You don't look at utilities, cable, cell phone bills. You look at their front-end ratio, which is their housing ratio, and their debt ratio, which basically is a consumer loan and a car payment, and we don't even have to count that if it's less than ten months. So I'm looking at this, and I'm really, I'm disgusted, and I just wanted to share with you, I'm not the only one disgusted. I couldn't get down, and I don't know why my neighbors chose to call me, and I don't know why I can't get them to be more proactive and to come here and to voice their concern. So I'm looking at a bill, and my house is located in the county part of Thompson Estates, which is another mess to begin with. But I just, I don't understand how something could go up fifty percent. And, you know, it's just, it's unfortunate, because most working-class people, which is Thompson Estates, they're angry, they don't know what to do with their anger, they're not perhaps professionally educated, but certainly now they're in there with a mortgage that they're probably struggling to pay, which is what I hear, and they're looking at bills that are coming in. Now mine is the bare minimum. I mean, I call somebody, I think, from the water works, I'm never in this house, I really, for the most part, live in Philadelphia. But I have to look at this, and I look at this water bill, and maybe I flush the toilet ten times a month, and maybe I'm at the house two days a week, and it's very concerning to me that the bills are going up. And again, you know, the people are hurting, and I don't see, they're looking at this, and they're talking about it on the sidewalk, but that's as far as it's going. So what can we do about this? How can we have increases? How can we have increases that are fifty percent on water, ten percent on sewer?
I just want to address one thing. I live in Thompson Estates also, and I do keep myself educated on this. And if they, we had many, many discussions on this. You basically live out of town, so I'm sure you didn't hear about it until you received the water bill.
Exactly.
So there was, like Mr. Littenberg stated, he knew about the increase and when it was coming, because he stays very informed with what the town does. So it wasn't something that was not told to the public, it's been in the paper. You know, we pay martian, we pay Seven Trent, and as you see, we still are in the red. So it's not something that we, as a board, wanted to do. It was something that had to be done at this time. And we are looking at other water resources and addressing them to see what we can do to help the community.
Well, thank you, and thank you for listening. I think my concern again is, just keep in mind that for every home buyer, and for me, eventually I'm going to sell my home, whether it's next year or two years from now, but hopefully about two years. But when I do, keep in mind, they don't look at the cost of the water bill when they're qualifying somebody for a mortgage. And that means that whoever's in this house may be in foreclosure when they're getting bills this hot. I mean, and that's another risk. It's almost like you have to somehow balance this out. You don't want a community with ten vacant houses in it, because, you know, then the Elton police are up and down the roads continually, and I've seen an increase in that as well.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much.
If you don't mind, what is that water bill?
My water bill is, sorry, I forgot.
Two hundred and twenty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Yeah, two twenty-four, two twenty-five, basically.
And you are out of town limits in Thompson Estates?
Yeah, I'm just on a road that was never part of the town.
What road is that, if you don't mind? Well, if we needed for record, don't we need the address?
That's not mine.
No, don't be angry with me while I'm not there.
No, no.
It's not Holden Lane, one oh three Holden Lane. I've owned the house since, God, since I've been twenty-one, my first year of teaching when I was at Perry Memorial School.
Okay.
Which was many years ago. Seems like a lifetime ago, but it was still a wonderful place, just around my teaching That's basically it. But thank you.
All right, thank you.
You do the helps.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I live in the town limits, so I feel the pain as well.
I think we all do. Jules?
I decline right now, because this, for tell, said just about what I was going to say.
That is one of those Italians.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Clark?
Well, it's the same old thing, speeding on North Street. But I must say, your police department has been diligent in getting a lot of troopers, or a lot of speeders. Mr. Givens, thank you for driving within the twenty-five mile speed limit. You do see the small sign that's still there that Mary Jo was going to get me a year ago. And weather's warm, kids are frolicking out on the street, pushing each other, playing. I don't know, you know, Mr. George said that the town, you cannot petition the state highway to do something. Mary Jo is going to just request them.
I did request, but it's standard sizes for the.
He has a standard size, I want a standard size.
Would that, could we get any of the big signs we got on Red Hall Road?
The sign was put up based on their standards.
Standards of state highway.
Or to any kind of that. That's their standard speed limit sign.
Mr. George, I had a gentleman come from Chestertown, and I wanted to tell you, he kind of disagreed on that. I have his name, I have his car.
We can change if he wants. If he's with the state highway.
Yes.
Or he can still make a phone call, and it'll be changed.
Okay. But, you know, I keep asking, I keep asking. They're old signs, they don't reflect well.
Well, so also, there's a sign down from her house. Can I call, is there a sign just as you get over the bridge? Because sometimes the sign's past your house, right?
It's there.
But it's fair, but they're going twenty, they're going more than twenty-five miles an hour before you even see the sign.
They put that other mobile thing up there. They put after the sign, so people see the sign, and then they see their speed displayed on that.
I'm saying, the sign.
The minute they pass that thing, or forty-five minutes, miles. Mr. Givens, don't you see me in my yard watching the traffic?
I certainly do. It'll also inform you when the police department's out there doing the job.
Right, you do. And they go more than twenty-five mile an hour, I can tell you.
It certainly do.
Come and sit on my porch and watch them. I'm either mowing grass, raking, or doing something. And I say, slow down, slow down. And you know what digit I get stuck in my face?
Yeah.
When I try to get the traffic to slow down. But I guess the traffic on North Street's going to be like the water bill, just suck it up and live with it, like I've done for fifty-seven years in the same house. Thank you, Mary Jo.
Louis, the sign that she is referring to, is there a question that there may be what you call dead, they don't reflect?
Don't know, I can send him, I'll send another request to Kenny Bender about it.
He did check when she asked me to check, and they're saying it was a standard size, and it did not need to be replaced. And that was probably a year ago.
Okay, I'm not referring to the size when I say dead.
No, I know. Well, she mentioned the reflection and the size.
Okay.
For, so she could get a new sign, and they said it was not needed.
So the reflection was still good?
I'm assuming it was, because that's what was sent back.
Okay, because I don't know if it's a reflection.
I'll send an email to him to have him evaluated, because they deal with the size, location, and reflectivity of the signs.
Right.
It has to be the state's contractual analysis.
Well, can't they put another sign, put another sign just over the bridge before, at the end of the bridge ramp like, and then put one of those little red things, or orange on the top of it, to draw somebody's attention to it?
Would they do that?
They have that down on Red Hall Road, they got the signs, they've got those little orange things on the top with.
Almost look like flags?
Yes, well, yeah, something like that, a reflector, it would draw their attention to it. And then put one at the foot of the, at the end of the bridge, instead of past her house. Put one beforehand.
Just anything they can do, but.
They put this, remember one time, they put the lines on there to give the impression that the street was narrow.
Exactly.
Because they did evaluate that for speed, and they put that in there. Obviously, based on testimony and footage of the day, those efforts have not been fruitful.